Meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 3 at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon. Faulk can stand for a moment of silence and a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
We'd like to make, take a moment of silence to honor two fallen firefighters from our Erie Fire Department, Jack Green and Mike Callahan. We're grateful for their service and we send our love and support to their families.
Moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you allowed us to assemble here today. We ask that by the power of your spirit that you enable us to make good decisions on the behalf of the residents of Erie, PA. And we just ask that you remember those who are mourning, remember our firefighters, for we consider those who lost their life in the line of duty heroes. And we just ask that you look in on them and their families, look in on all those who are in need. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great and fortunate stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as eternal.
Approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 19, 2023, and bills for payment on May 5th, May 20, May 12, 2023. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon. Is this just public comments?
Good morning, Molly Bractle, 820 Cranberry. Today I bring a message from the mayor of Jamestown, New York about universal basic income. Jamestown actually has a universal basic income pilot. I thought folks might be tired of hearing about from me, so I looked here from a fellow, fellow mayor of a nearby, nearby city. A form of guaranteed income is a powerful tool in empowering people out of poverty. After experiencing the positive effects of the pandemic-related stimulus checks in 2020, I am excited to join mayors for a guaranteed income and advocating for an expanded program. Resources available through such a program create a point of entry to participation for marginalized individuals, stimulate entrepreneurship, and ease families' burdens in fulfilling financial responsibilities. As mayor of one of the lowest-income cities in New York State, a guaranteed income program would palpably impact our residents, small business operators, and community at large. And I will use my position to advocate for such a program at the state, local, and federal levels. So consider Mayor Eddie Sunquist advocating today for a UBI pilot in Erie, PA.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? All right.
Okay, we have a, um, a hearing this morning, but it won't start until 9:30, so we'll move on with the agenda. Ordinances for final passage. Excuse me. Council file number 16344, official final ordinance 192023, appropriating the sum of $21,336.44 of program income generated through the Community Development Block grant for the following CDBG CD21 projects. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. The council file ordinance bill number 192023, and now known as, I'm sorry, 16344, and now known as official file ordinance 192023, be finally passed by the City Council. Council file number 16345, official file ordinance 2020, 202023, appropriating the sum of $1,147.44 of program income generated through the Community Block Grant, Community Development Block Grant for the following CDBG CD21 projects. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. The council file ordinance bill number 16345, and now known as official file ordinance 202023, be finally passed by the City Council. Ordinances for first reading.
I'm sorry. There should be three. I don't know if there's one missing.
Okay. Council file number 16348, appropriating the sum of $3,500,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the State Street Streetscape project. Funding is from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP grant.
I'd like to comment.
Sure, discussion?
That was three, that was three and a half million. And so, uh, I just want, uh, we were so happy to get this, uh, this help from the state, uh, this three and a half million dollars, but also, you know, we should look at this from a lens of, you know, of priorities. You know, uh, we applied for, obviously for a grant with three and a half million dollars to do our streetscapes in the poor zip code in the United States. And so, uh, just wanted to make, you know, that, that footnote.
Any other comments?
Call for the vote.
The council file ordinance number 16348, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Council file number 16349, an ordinance amending, 1129.09A of the Quality of Life Ticketing Ordinance to amending and restating fines and penalties. Any comments?
I'd like to add a comment. I think it's, it's really important to recognize when we're talking about code enforcement and quality of life ticketing, um, that this is, this is not meant to target our lower-income homeowners. This is meant to hold accountable landlords, um, who aren't taking care of rental properties, for example. Um, this is a way that we can take care of each other's neighbors, love our blocks, all of those things that we've been talking about. Um, and so we need to, we need to increase these, these penalties from $25 to $100 to, um, ensure that our, our neighborhoods are being taken care of.
Any other comments, discussion? Call for the vote.
The council file ordinance number 16349, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Ordinance, council file number 16350, amending Article 330, Sections 330.02, 330.03, 330.07, and 330.11, to incorporate short-term rentals into its rental registration and licensing program to revise registration period fees and insurance requirements for all residential rentals and to establish fines for failure to register. Any comments?
I'd like to offer some comments. This is, uh, this is four different areas that we're going to be addressing as short-term rentals have been updated into the zoning ordinance in order to accommodate, um, that change a little more directly. Uh, the first thing is inspections because of the turnover that occurs in the short-term rentals. Instead of, as of now, as they've been registered, the same as long-term rentals, the inspections have been every other year. Because there's a more frequent turnover, those inspections will be more frequent. They'll be yearly now. That also increases the fees for those inspections because they'll be yearly instead of every other year, that doubles the fees. There has been some discussion as to making those more substantial of fees. At this time, we are, we are not updating it any further because the fees have to be revenue-neutral and we have to be able to justify them. At the end of the year, if we find that, uh, code enforcement is, uh, overburdened and needs more to address this, then we will update the fees in the appropriate manner as they suggest based on need. Uh, so this is not a closed ordinance. It is just, uh, we need to make it revenue-neutral as the state restricts us. But in this case, uh, if needed to be updated, you know, we updated all of those fees back in December just as well, uh, for a whole list of different licenses. Uh, so this will be updated as needed. Uh, the other area of update is insurance. Uh, previously it was a $50,000 insurance that was needed to be carried. We increased it for long-term rentals as well because it hadn't been, uh, addressed in a while to 150, and for short-term, it's up to a half a million. If places are working on Airbnb or Verbo, they're more likely to have a million anyways. Uh, but, uh, it's important to be able to establish that in a way that is a little more comprehensive, especially given the, the nature of what we hold hotels to or, um, or bed and breakfast, for example, to bring Airbnbs while they're not those things, a little closer to that. Uh, the final thing that we updated was fines for not registering. Uh, that increased to $1,000. While not in the draft of the ordinance that is available, it does say in the original ordinance that that is monthly. So that is explicitly stated, uh, that if they fail to register, that it will be a $1,000 fine for failure to registry. The importance of that is that, that many of these short-term rentals are getting a much higher rate than even the rentals. Uh, so there's, there's money to be, um, there's a reason not to register and to just keep going because they may make enough money to justify that. So those were the four specific areas that were addressed. And with plenty of discussion and, and some feedback. Yes, that's, that's the updates to it then. That's all I got to say. Any other discussion or offers of comments?
Well, I know that nothing's going to be perfect, but we're hoping that with the ordinance and the steps that we took for the last six years, that things will go in the right direction and the people who are operating Airbnbs can continue to, and their neighbors will be happy with these additional protections, that hopefully we can, um, come together and work to find the perfect solution. No one's always going to be 100% happy, but ultimately, this has been six years that we've been studying, going back and forth, so we're happy to wrap it up. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Call for the vote.
Council file, excuse me, council file number 16350. The council file ordinance number 16350, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
Ten more minutes till the hearing. I think we could go on to old business.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the agenda, that we covered the items. I was, I think we skipped one. I guess I just want to make sure, did we do 344, 345, 46, and 47?
I don't think we did bicycle.
Did we not do bicycle? I don't know.
I think three and four. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Your bet.
Going back to final passage, council file number 16346. The council file ordinance file, excuse me, bill number 16346, and now known as official file ordinance 212023. Let me read it. Appropriating the sum of $135,496 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue from expenditure thereof, contribution from Federal Operations Grant FEMA for a one-year expense for fire inspector. Any comments? Council file ordinance bill number 16346, and now known as official file ordinance 212023, be finally passed by the City Council. Council file number 16347, amending Article 533 Bicycle Licensing and Operation Ordinance by repealing Sections 533.02, 533.03, and 533.06, 533.07, 533.08, and 533.09 in their entirety. Any comments? Council file ordinance bill number 16347, and now known as official file ordinance 222023, be finally passed by the City Council.
Moving on to old business?
Um, old business is our public hearing.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So we can move on to new business.
Without Ed here, uh, motion to move the balance of the agenda?
I'd like to make one separation. For transfers, for CDBG cares, as an employee of the MLK Center, I will be abstaining from that vote.
And which one was that?
H transfers, the third one, CDBG cares.
Okay.
Oh, um, and then under the ESG cares, the upper room, I serve on the board there. I shouldn't be in that vote.
Any other separations? Moving the balance of the end, agenda. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
Can we start with the hearing a couple of minutes later? No, we can't.
It says approximately.
Oh, 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 yeah, we have to. Sorry.
Okay.
All right.
Voting on the transfers, CDBG cares, in the amount of $206,200. Ms. Faulkner.
Abstain.
Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Transfer passes, five, one abstain. Transfer for ESG cares in the amount of $37,123.01 from miscellaneous, um, groups to St. Patrick's Haven and City Mission. Call for vote, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
Abstain.
Transfer passes, eight, five, one abstain, Mr. Nelson.
Well, we've got two minutes until we do the old business of a public hearing. If anyone needs two minutes.
If anyone would like to entertain us.
If it were.
Does anyone sing?
I could just twist this button a little bit and we'll just say it's.
We could do, um, comments from, in advance of the thing.
Uh, we need more time than that. We, it's, it's like, it's now down to one minute.
My report is really short.
I could just call on the people that I know do short reports. All right, calling the, uh, public hearing to order.
Calling for a public hearing pursuant to a public hearing being held on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at approximately 9:30 a.m. in City Council chambers, relative to the rezoning request from Vendetti Brothers Associates to rezone three parcels identified as and 1805174010200, located south of East 38th Street between McClellan Avenue and Burr Drive, from C2 General Commercial to R1 Low Density Residential, accompanied by the prerequisite, excuse me, filing fee of $500. It is further recommended to rezone parcel 18051073010700, located in the same block from C3 to C2 to correct a previous zoning map error. The C3 district is reserved for the downtown central business district only. The rezoning of the parcel will also be a logical extension of the surrounding adjacent C2 district. The correction rezoning has also been discussed with property owner who has agreed it is appropriate. Any comments? Is there anyone here to speak regarding this?
I'm a resident of, uh, Vegas, Captain Brechak.
Okay.
And you do four of them against, right? Anyone here?
Anyone here to speak, uh, will need to have you sworn in for your testimony. If you would stand up and raise your right hand. Who is it?
Personal presentation first?
Do you have a presentation to provide?
Yes, sir.
No, no, the, uh, does the property owner have a presentation to provide? Yes, please.
Morning, members. Uh, my name is Chester Vendetti, uh, general partner of Vendetti Brothers Associates, who own the parcel. We, uh, own forty acres there. We wish to rezone twenty acres from C-two, I believe, well, whatever it was, to, uh, to R-one, for the purpose of putting up a subdivision to take advantage of LURDA. That seems to be the driving force at this point in time. That's, that's, that's what we want to do. We'll put out residential homes, have the buyers take advantage of LURDA, and, uh, bring people back into the city.
Any questions for Mr. Vendetti?
Could you please share with us, um, around average value of home, about how many homes you're planning? Just kind of generally paint the picture of the subdivision.
All this isn't a plan, excuse me, all this is in the planning stages now, but, uh, we could put in a hundred-plus homes, uh, give or take, depending on things. Uh, homes would run, homes would be about a thousand to fifteen-hundred square feet. We're, have a range of about four or five homes, um, priced between, uh, between two-ten, two-twenty to three-thirty. And with the advantage of LURDA and some other, uh, programs that are out there, uh, we're, I'm trying to compete with rentals around the area, keep, keep the payments in, anywhere between eleven-hundred to fifteen-hundred bucks, depending on, you know, a whole bunch of things.
Sir, how long have you owned the land that you're currently trying to rezone? This is like the second or third?
About forty-five years.
Forty-five years? Okay, thank you.
Actually, it was a, they were all working farms. They were, they were not working farm. A lot of it was, was working farm. Old man, old man Dedish, uh, owned the property there. He's working, he actually had an outhouse back then. And was using it, yeah, anyhow. He gets the penny. I don't know where he got his water. I never, I never talked to him about that, but, uh.
Sir, where, where exactly is it located for the public? Could you tell us exactly where it's located for the public?
Uh, Bayfront Highway and, uh, McClellan Avenue on the north, uh, nor, on the northeast quadrant, northeast corner. Yeah, right, right in the back of there's a, there's a, um, there used to be a roller rink. Now it's a, uh, uh, but, um, I don't.
A jump gym, something, yeah.
Something, yeah.
Um, what kind of, given that this is obviously a, a natural area right now, and like you said, used to be farm area, um, what type of like environmental considerations are you taking for this, for the subdivision?
Well, there's a five air, air, there's five acres of delineated wetlands over there. Delineated about fifteen years ago, we had delineated. Interesting thing about that was, uh, when we bought the property, we didn't realize that there was a crick on the property. And then when we, uh, and then when, uh, I, I was talking to the neighbors over there, and, uh, there are a group of them, they're extremely irate, and, uh, and I said, well, what, what's the problem? And they said, come here, I'll show you the problem. They had four or five houses were, uh, uh, blocked off with plywood. And the city, when they put the subdivisions, uh, up on, um, uh, nor, south of Thirty-Eighth Street, they just took all this water, dumped it into, onto our property from about nineteen fifty-two with a big, uh, a, a, a five-foot va- uh, uh, tube just coming on our property, and when it would storm, all this water would come down, it actually moved one of the houses off of the, uh, off of the, uh, off the foundation. And these, these guys were mad, and they were calling City Hall, calling City Hall, anyhow. So then with PennDOT came in and the city and everything, then they put that retain, the retention pond over on the east side of our property, the big retention pond, and there's a tube underneath our property, they tubed it over there, and, and the Penn, PennDOT paid for that, so that, that was good. But that's, it's not a natural, uh, uh, wetlands. It's, it's an artificial one, but DEP doesn't care. It's just, it's a wetlands. So we're gonna leave that fi- roughly five acres. We'll have a, we'll have a buffer zone of, you know, probably thirty feet along the residential areas. Uh, we're, I'm trying to leave as many trees as we can. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I call leaf, we're gonna try and replace as many trees. I had three foresters look at it. The, the, the trees there are not, desirable, from their standpoint. Uh, a lot of brush and stuff like that, but, uh, we're trying to do what we can to, to make it, you know, to make it green.
I have one last question. What, for the subdivision, will the entrance of it be on McClellan, or what would the, will this change any traffic patterns?
We tried to get in off of, uh, Bird Drive, but, but we couldn't for a bunch of reasons. Mr. Betson knows all about that. Um, but, so, uh, we're coming in off of Rice Avenue right now, and, um, I can't, I could come in off of McClellan at some point. Engineering hasn't been done again on this stuff. Um, and we also have, if you notice, if you go on the Bayfront Highway, there's a curb cut, and we could put a light there. That's a very expensive proposition, and, uh, probably would need, you know, more traffic, uh, to, to do that. But right now, we're coming in.
Anything else, sir? Anything else from council?
Yeah, and so, understanding that, you know, engineering, uh, is, is a cost, but to not be able to physically see the project is a impediment to people who are visual learners like myself, you know, uh, if you have some preliminary engineering somewhere where it shows where the streets will be, where the houses will be, or where, where they're planned to be.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure.
That, that would be a great help.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we're marketing this through Bay City Realty, uh, and there, it's on, it's on the website, uh, realtor.com under new construction, and, uh, we got three thousand, uh, hits, sixty, uh, sixty, uh, prints, I think, I don't know too much about this, but prints or copies, and, um, we're actually talking about fo- to five or six people now that are very, very interested. Actually, one, one's a girl, an attorney also from, uh, Erie, but she lived in Denver all her life, and she wants to move back here. But it's very diff- as you said, it's very difficult for people to, when they go there, see, you know, very difficult to, to figure out. So we have to, we have to start with a couple of homes and see, and see how it goes, basically.
Anything else?
I actually, I actually did talk to two people that were adjacent to our property on Rice Avenue. Two old, I'm sorry, I did not. Mark Graham from Bay City Realty talked to them, and, uh, they said they were, they were okay with it. They were older gentlemen. I, I don't remember their names.
Regarding the wetlands there, that's our artificial wetlands, uh, so, does it run to the creek, uh, now that, uh, outlets over there is further south of, uh?
There, there is no water, there's, there's no water on that, on that property now, since they tubed it into the retention pond, there, there's no water there, other than rainwater and things like that.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not wet when you see it. They, they determined it by the flora, you know, the flowers and the, in the.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so you put a tube underneath it, also. I'm just saying, it's, it's pumped into the space, and did I hear you say it's pumped out of the space, or drains out of the space into a tube?
The wetlands goes from where this curb cut is, on the south side of the property, right about in the middle of the property, and it goes all the way north to the city storms, a storm source over there, which couldn't handle, couldn't handle it. They were, they weren't, it wasn't designed for, for all this water. So what we did, or what PennDOT did, is they tubed it. The tube doesn't go under our property there, it goes to the east. It goes, it goes to the east to the retention pond, uh, on the east side of the, city owns the retention pond over there. It's a real big one, you can't, can't help but see it. But it, th- there's no water underneath that, that property, or, I mean, there, there's no tu- there's no water tubed underneath that, that, that area. Okay, thank you.
Is there, uh, this one, is there like a, I mean, are the houses gonna run along the Bayfront Highway too, eventually?
No, I don't think so. We're gonna save ten acres for commercial over there.
Okay, so there won't be any houses that'll be visible?
I don't envision that, no.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Vendetti.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to offer comments now? Oh, sorry, do we have anyone else in favor of the project? Sorry, I was a little out of order there. Anyone else in favor of the project? If anyone else has anything to offer in opposition to the project, you may line up and come to the podium.
My name's Jason Connor. I've lived at thirty-three fifteen Rice Avenue for nineteen years now. Um, my biggest concern is the traffic. Um, I am the last house on the dead-end street, which the realtor he spoke of did speak with me. I'm definitely not in favor of traffic coming through there. Um, the street, if you park a car on each side, you can't fit another one through the middle. I don't know how you're gonna get a hundred homes worth of people through that street. Um, the traffic, getting on McClellan right there is an issue already, uh, with that industrial park. Um, I mean, you're just asking for a big headache there. I mean, if it was to come in off the Bayfront, I don't think it would be such a big deal, but, like I said, my biggest concern is the traffic coming through there. Um, like you said, if you park a car on each side, you can't fit another one through. How are you gonna have through traffic there? That's, that's my only biggest concern. I'm not opposed to it, it's his property, you know what I mean? If it was mine, I would wanna develop it too. He's been wanting to do it for a long time, but, um, I would just be very mindful of that. How are you gonna get in there? You know, what's the best way to get in there? And the best way is definitely not through Rice, not at all.
Thank you, sir. Oh, sorry, I need, so Rice Ave is on the, okay, okay, between McClellan and, so, so, um, so those are mostly woodlands behind your house?
Yeah. Yep.
I'm trying to visualize it, 'cause I know that there are actual wetlands back there.
Oh, yeah.
There's a creek that runs, uh, to the lake, uh, on that property somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, it goes under and it goes to Dog Park.
So I don't, so that's what I'm trying to get with, how are we mitigating that, or how are we getting around an actual physical stream that goes to the lake, somewhere on that property that doesn't appear to be addressed?
Yeah, that's, that's like more car, towards the middle, like kinda in the middle. I'm like more towards like the, the west side of it, pretty close to McClellan. A lot of people don't even know there's a little piece of Rice Avenue there.
Well, stop it, ground eye. So anyways.
Yeah. If you look on Google Earth, you'll see it, and, like you said, it's, it's very narrow. I don't know how you'd fit all them cars through there. That's all I got.
Good morning. My name is John Cox, and I live at twenty-six forty-nine East Thirty-Four Street, which is located at the northeast corner of the proposed rezoning area. I have lived in this house for twenty-two years. My biggest concern when buying this house was that the house was attached, and the attached garage were built on the back of the property lot. The attached garage is under ten feet from the property line. I was reassured that with the property directly behind us, being commercial property, there would be at least fifty feet of buffer area between us and any commercial construction if it were to happen in the future. Now with the possible rezoning change to residential, I could be looking at single-family dwellings right up to the back of my house. I like and enjoy everything about my home at this time. It's located in a peaceful area on a dead-end street. We have a field and woods directly behind our home, where we often see deer, turkey, and other wildlife. It is nice to have a country setting, but enjoy all the comforts and resources of a city. For twenty-two years, I have mowed, treated, and maintained the seventy-five by a hundred and sixty-feet grass area directly behind my property, and other neighbors near us have done the same with the areas behind them. This rezoning change will lessen our privacy, increase traffic, and we could possibly be looking at houses directly out of our kitchen window, and also from our, our enclosed patio. As much as I prefer not to do this at this point in my life, if this rezoning does go through and construction begins behind our property, it might be time to consider moving out of the city of Erie and look for a house elsewhere. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Does anyone have any questions for? Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Kathleen Kryshak, K-R-Y-S, as in Sam, I-A-K. Thank you for meeting with us today, we appreciate this. Our neighborhood is based on a lot of long-term people living in established houses. My points regarding Mr. Vendetti's plan, we're at the planning stage. Planning stage leads to actually happening. So that's why we're here to protect this today, to stop that from happening. My home is about seventeen hundred square feet. He's talking about one thousand-foot, no-garage residential properties? That sounds like apartments to me. LURDA is all fine and good. I don't feel anyone moving into that type of a residence is going to contribute to our neighborhood, keep up properties, and keep our property values the level they are at now. There's a lot of concerned neighbors. We're talking about a thirty-foot buffer? My living room is twenty by twenty. That is not a large buffer. You're gonna need something more than that. In addition, to begin with, those studies about the wetlands need done, and when he's talking about comparison to rental properties, that tells me again, the population you're looking to bring into that residential area is not vested property homeowners. So those are my concerns: wetlands, wildlife, privacy, and whether this is really an appropriate type of residential development in this area. I noticed in the article in the paper yesterday that we were talking about, eventually we will exit onto Bird Drive. All those dead-end streets, Thirty-Fifth, Thirty-Sixth, those have already been talked about, and as the other neighbor said, those are not very wide streets. You can only park two cars on them. That is it. If you have a bunch of people coming into a residential area, in and out, that's going to cause a huge traffic problem. Bird Drive is high traffic, McClellan is high traffic, and high speed, unfortunately. Those things all are going to impact that neighborhood severely. I don't think it's going to bring an attorney from Denver to live on the east side of Erie in the middle of a railroad track area, wetlands. So whatever kind of thing he's got planned in here, we don't agree with it. I'm a representative of probably about ten neighbors in my direct contact. Thank you. I appreciate your efforts on this. My address is thirty-five twenty Bird Drive. I've been there for thirty-two years. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Completely hear you on long-term homeowner, homeowners and wanting to preserve your neighborhoods. If this were to move forward in some sort of capacity, is there a buffer area? Like, is there a wider buffer that you feel like could be some sort of compromise in this situation?
I think it would have to be at least a hundred feet.
Okay.
I would like to see a full parcel of land between the Bird Drive neighbors and this property.
Okay.
Again, other thing I would like to mention, little bit of misconception about what's been discussed for this property. The story has changed a couple different times. The comment about speaking with neighbors in earnest, I don't back it up. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to make comments? All right. Whoa, no, no, no. So you missed public hearing, or you missed public comments. Are you married? Did you call me this week? Did I talk to you already?
Uh, I told you, but I wanted to tell you guys.
All right. Okay. You, you missed public comments. There won't be another opportunity, but we'll all be here afterwards and we'll make sure somebody speaks to you. Okay? Anyone else here for the public hearing? All right.
Can I ask one question? Can you put like a Google Earth map, like one of these screens, so you guys can see it, like where the property is, so you can kinda see where the traffic?
So we were, we were given a packet in preparation of this with the map of it. So that's what, so when he asked the question, I, I pulled open the packet that we were given ahead of time in preparation and handed it to him to, to discuss the proximity. So we do have that in the packet that we were given in preparation for the hearing.
I was just curious, cuz I mean, you know, see it on a map, you would see like why the traffic is not gonna make sense like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you take the traffic out there, look at it.
Yeah.
So it's incumbent upon either the presenter or the people who oppose something to bring exhibits, not, not on the council. We are here to hear information that is presented and, and our court reporters here to, to annotate it.
Okay, again, I'm not opposed to that. I have this property and I always wanna develop it too. But it's the biggest concern, I need it. It's off the Bayfront, it's closed. But coming in off the little stretch, it's missing process.
All right. Any other comments?
Just to be, just to be clear, it's testimony. And so then, once all testimony is offered, we would close the public hearing.
Okay. Did I make a motion for that? Sorry. All right. And with that, we close the public hearing.
Mr. President, this takes us to committee reports.
All right. Suzanne, you wanna start? We'll go from left to right today.
Sure. All right. I wanna start with a couple things. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so want to recognize that, encourage folks to be aware of the various services that we have in the community as well as the nine-eight-eight crisis line. I'm gonna keep bringing that up probably every meeting because we need it. And folks need to know that that resource is available. If you or someone you love or know is experiencing a mental health crisis, substance use, suicidal thoughts, nine-eighty is available. Going through various departments, Fire had a hundred-and-fifty-two calls for service. Also, thank you to everyone who applied for joining our great Erie Fire Department. Applications have now closed. And like we mentioned in the beginning, just another nod to the families of Mike Callahan and Jack Green. Both were firefighters who passed in the past few weeks due to related complications from, from their service in the Fire Department. They were also honored on Friday, which some of us got to attend Workers Memorial Day here. So honoring them, honoring their families. For Police Department, I wanna make a public correction. Last meeting, I spoke about the May sixth open house. That, it turns out, is not open to the public, so please don't show up to that. And so my apologies for that. That is for the family members of, of the Police Department from ten AM to two PM. So misspoke there. There were one thousand ninety-six calls for service last week, including two shootings, and a reminder that our poverty rate is directly connected to our violence and gun rate, gun shooting rate. Been helping several residents around some housing issues. May is also Affordable Housing Month, and a reminder that for every hundred people seeking affordable housing in the city of Erie, only thirty of them can secure it. So I'm definitely a proponent of more housing, but as long as that is done equitably. For folks who have concerns around housing or have questions for City Hall, for administration, I really encourage folks to reach out to our Citizen Response Center. The number for that is eight-one-four-eight-seven-zero-one-one-one-one. You can call with a complaint, a concern, a compliment, a question, and that's just a great resource that I really wanna ensure folks take advantage of. Last two, for Sewer Authority, I'm very excited. I'm doing my tour there next Wednesday and also received some interesting information from fellow council members Chuck and Jasmine. They had attended a municipal conference a couple hours away.
Yeah, St. Mary's.
St. Mary's. And they introduced me to a concept of one of our neighbors, Hermitage, PA, just south a little bit. They are absolutely doing something incredible with their sewer authority. They have invested in with, thanks to state and federal grant funds, a sewage digester, which essentially is helping to close the loop on fueling some of their city buildings and their sewer, their sewer authority. They are leading the nation in that with, just from environmental perspective, but also a circular economy, creating biogas. And so that's incredible. And after my, I will definitely bring that up on my tour to the Sewer Authority as a, as a potential, you know, potential solution moving forward where we don't need to keep investing in incinerators, but maybe do something progressive, right? And something that really lines us up for our future with protecting our environment in the age of the climate crisis. Lastly, as folks know, if you're driving along the Bayfront, you've been watching the construction by the Water Authority and the city on the Sassaf, Sassifrost Street connector there that is almost completed and, and will be open shortly. I attended the Water Authority meeting two weeks ago and, yeah, everything's going well there. And I'll be doing that tour once some of their construction and renovation projects are completed. That's it.
Mr. President, that's a hard act to follow, man. Even though I'm, even though I'm a great talker, I'm not gonna try to compete. I have no report today, but I would like to say if you guys would, if you're in contact with youth, just remember all of our youth from what we consider the best behaved to the worst behaved or whatever. They're all, they all have a future. I work with them every day, try to encourage them. We know the summer's coming up. Say something positive to them, that they'll finish the year strong and, and, you know, stay engaged so that, you know, they can keep themselves out of trouble this summer. So just remember our youth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna tag on to Councilman Trup. The summer is, well, not according to the weather, but the summer is here according to the calendar. The Summer Basketball League, I met last night. We set some dates on startup. We're having competition this year with the basketball leagues, and our numbers right now are down. So we are beginning to concentrate on the individuals that are not on traveling teams. And AAU have tournaments every weekend. So we're gonna do a big push at the Bayview Park. The Nineteenth Street Park has, right now we have a hundred-and-eighty-nine registered. We can use volunteer coaches. All coaches must present to me child abuse certificates. If you do not have a child abuse certificate, you will not coach. Volunteers and some of the page staff must have the certificate as well. We will not have anyone in our organization that does not or cannot get a certificate. And it's free. If you go online and put down your volunteer, it doesn't cost you anything. We also received a notification about the bank board that was damaged last year, thanks to Matt Perezis, former director of the Erie Bayhawks, had made contact with Spalding through the NBA. And the purchase of the bank board has been made. It's on its way to Erie as I speak. And I wanna thank Mr. Nick Scott Senior of Scott Enterprises for that purchase. And once it's here, if we can get our Public Works Department to put it up, that's great. If not, Mr. Scott said his team will install it as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Keys?
I attended the airport meeting. The airport reportedly is looking for carriers to bring more flights to Erie. We've, you know, lost a couple of flights. And we also welcomed a new board member, Ms. Dorothy Smith Frazier, to the Airport Authority. And I can say that, you know, I've been liaison to the airport for four years, and it's the first time, other than the executive director, that, you know, there was somebody who looked like me in the room. And so I think that that's a definite step forward as far as inclusiveness goes. We get a lot of value out of having diverse people at the table. I, over the past weekend, I was involved in the Global Youth Service Day. I came in in the morning, helped rally the kids, and they had good programs for them all day. The, then their keynote speaker, Damar Hamel, came in in the afternoon and signed autographs. The mayor presented him a key to the city. And so it was good that we, you know, that our city participated in this. And just wanted to echo with Mr. Witherspoon and Mr. Trup said that, you know, the kids, we have to invest in the kids so that they know, one, that we care, and, two, that they are valuable to us. And so I'm gonna do a small commercial for Spoons League. Spoons League is free. I guess that's what we say, not, you know, free to the participants. Everything has a cost. And so, especially since we are a theoretically disadvantaged community, go to the free league.
So on April twenty-fourth, I had a committee meeting with the EMTA. They go over the regular operations of the month. They have a community event coming up on June fourteenth, so please mark your calendars. They probably will have a mini performer, probably food trucks, so it'll be fun. I know that they have another meeting coming up on May twenty-second, so if you, as a community member, have things you would like to see improved with the EMTA, I definitely recommend that you participate in that public meeting. You can call the phone number eight-one-four-four-five-nine-eight-nine-two-two to get registered. There is going to be a Blighted Property Meeting, May tenth, at nine P, uh, nine AM through Zoom. So if you are a community member who would like to participate and hear what's going on with the Blighted Property Committee, that is your opportunity to get involved in that committee. I have been planning, and hopefully we can get a meeting scheduled with my IT Innovation and Communication Committee, just to go over the internet coverage of the city, to see where we were before the pandemic and where we are now. I think that that would give a lot of community members reassurance that the city is doing what we need to make sure the whole city is connected to internet service, whether it's fiber or dial-up. I wanna make sure the city does not have any black zones. There are still community members who are in the dark zone. With spring being here and summer being here, the city does not have spring cleanup any longer. We have a large item pickup, so if you are a community member who has large items and you would like to get those out of your home, I recommend that you call eight-one-four-eight-seven-zero-one-five-five-zero or go online to register the large items. That way you can put them out on your next trash pickup. That way we can get the city prettier and cleaner. We border the lake, and it is our duty to make sure that we are not filled with litter. We need to do our best to make sure that city of Erie is doing everything we can for the environment. Mother Earth is very important, and if we are not doing our part, no one is going to take care of her. So let's be good humans and make sure that we are not filling her with filth. Thank you, and that is all I have to report.
Thank you. I've got a couple things on my report. First off, I was in Harrisburg with the Chamber of Commerce. They're having a little get-together where there's some people from Erie that are meeting with folks down in Harrisburg for the Deputy Secretary of Diversity, Inclusion, and Small Business Opportunities. They've got people meeting with breakouts with the Department of Community Economic Development, the Tourism and Economic Recreation Department, Transportation, Education, Commerce. Our state senator, Laughlin, was there, as well as Mersky and Bizarro last night, got to meet, meet our new Speaker of the House. And it got to the point where I can't even name how many representatives I met there. Ryan Bizarro has a lot of friends on the floor, and, and he brought all of them, and I can't, and it got to the point where it was starting to get redundant. It was a lot of Harrisburg representation, excited to meet our chamber and our business community. So very excited about that. It was quite the experience, and we were, we were warmly welcomed in Harrisburg. Something that was pretty random this weekend, somebody started up a new Facebook page called Independent Erie Review, and they trained an AI Chat GPT to, to look over our city finances. And then had a bunch of questions about what AI discovered. And so I got to, I got to talking to the, the page, and, and I think, I think I discovered as, as the Federal Reserve meets today and discusses interest rates, there's a new opportunity and discuss interest rates, there's a new opportunity that we really have not been able to, to embrace in the last couple of years. The city has a lot of money in the bank and Title 11 is what says what we can invest that general funds in. It's Title 11. And it's anything that's FDIC. There's a couple other things, our pension and our water reserve fund, which I don't think, I'm not sure the last time a councilperson's talked about the water reserve fund as much as me. But there's certain things we're able to invest and get a remarkable return on. But our general funds, we're not able to invest them outside of FDIC. And with a higher interest rate, we, we've got over $100 million in the bank that is currently not in treasury bills, particularly short-term. If you really like geeky number things, our inverted yield curve is giving the city quite an opportunity. And with short-term treasury bills, I think the city can see as much as $6 million in revenue this year by making some of these pivots. So I met with our finance director on Monday as soon as I got, and I, I met with our controller about it. I talked to our, to Mr. Shember about it. And, and I think we may have an opportunity. And when you look at what our, our deficit is in the next two years, this is the kind of revenue that would literally close the gap for the next two years until the interest rates come back down and inflation gets subdued. The city, I think, has quite an opportunity. So that was, that was quite a bit of research this week. And I'm not sure how much of us talking to real person versus AI, but they put us on to something there. Today, we did the first reading of two different housing ordinances. Since council became organized this year, we've now had nine meetings. And, and I want to point out that we are now nine meetings in with every single final vote that we've done being unanimous. We've had some disagreements on first readings. We've had some, some really good discussion in caucus that's led to some tabled votes and such. But we've now made it nine meetings with every single final vote being unanimous. So I just want to really thank my, my, my peers here on council for the, the great work that's been happening this year to build consensus, to drive things forward, to really address some ordinances. I want to address something that Susanna brings up. I was on the Sewer Authority last year. And, and I set some goals for myself and I thought I'd have a couple of years to work on them. Before taking office, so you, you mentioned Hermitage, but before taking office, I had the opportunity to, to go to Longmont, Colorado. It's the city of the same size as us that's the fastest growing. And they grew a number of different ways. They made a plan for citywide fiber in 1998 and had it implemented within the next decade. So I did a lot of work with them on that. But they also had an anaerobic digester that I got to check out, which is the first I'd ever heard of it. I brought that information back here. And because our natural gas is so cheap here, it, it wasn't financially feasible to do it as natural gas. Where Hermitage is doing it differently is they're converting that into electricity to sell back to the grid. So, so I've been chasing that around for a while now. I'm happy to hear that you're picking that up. I've got a guy that I've been working with and the guy down at Hermitage, we're working on a field trip there. So make sure Basil knows that when you do on your sewer tour. And any, anything you hear of me doing research on that, then you say, oh, this is great. Then you start running with it yourself. Make sure that I stay in on that. I, just because I'm not the liaison there, doesn't mean that I don't want to still do that work. It's, I think it's a really exciting opportunity. Anyways, that, that concludes my report. Controller, Teresa, do we have anything?
I just have one. We'll be meeting next week with the aggregate board to see what the quarterly report for the pension funds have done. So other than that, that's all I have. What's that?
Next week, when?
Uh, Tuesday.
All right. Solicitor? Renee?
Good morning, everyone. I'll try to be, I'll try to be quick. A few things, I wanted to make sure that residents know that the portal for applications for the Environmental Advisory Council are open. The deadline to apply is May 22nd. The online application can be found on our website and on social media. And we will repost that later today. Basically, requirements are they must be city of Erie residents and have a background, education, or expertise in environmental issues, natural resources, and conservation strategies. So we look forward to those applications. They've been coming in steadily. Also, want to remind people that we have two Love Your Block cleanups coming up this Saturday and next Saturday. This Saturday, May 6th, in the Lakeside Neighborhood, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Folks who want to help should meet at Edison Elementary at 1921 East Lake Road. And then on May 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., in the East Bayfront Neighborhood, folks should meet at East 6th and Parade. And for those who are interested, they could follow our Love Your Block page on, on Facebook and other social media channels. Third, we have our tire and reci, and electronics recycling event this Saturday at the Municipal Garage at 1926 Holland Street. That's free for city of Erie residents from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I also want to remind people that Infinite Erie, the Permanent Supportive Housing Group, has been, has had an RFQ out, Request for Qualifications, to developers of a 35 to 50 unit site. Those applications are due May 16th. We had a Q and A with potential developers yesterday. And any questions need to be submitted by May 8th to, to be answered in time for the May 16th deadline. We're also continuing to work with Bloomberg Harvard on our housing strategy. Our GIS administrator, which, that, who started about a month ago, has been doing a lot of work with inputting our blighted properties into our GIS system. And it's already been very fruitful for us. Our data analyst starts in a couple of weeks. And we'll be assisting with that project and with many other projects that we have on our to-do list. Sixth, our Summer Rec Guide is at the printer. So in addition to Spoons, we have many other free activities for city residents all summer long. Those will be distributed to the community centers and all of various public schools and other schools within the city of Erie, probably between May 10th and 12th. So folks should look for that. And finally, tomorrow is our press conference at Erie Central Fire Station, where we'll be having a flip the switch event, the municipal building. It's one of the, it's the only municipal building in the state and the only firehouse that has solar panels with a battery backup. So it's very exciting for us and we hope to do a lot more of that. And that's all I have for today.
Yeah, I saw you were in Lancaster, too. I really, I always appreciate seeing our city engage other cities to find their best practices. That's, that was exciting to see on socials. So anyways, and with that, city council meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:19. Mr. Nelson, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon.